At six o'clock, and I would ask, Carrie, would you call your meeting also?
A meeting to order at six o'clock.
Okay. What we are here for tonight is for an informative meeting where we are prepared to and to answer questions that may come from the public, both those people here and anyone who is listening, we'll do our very best to answer the questions for you, and if we can't, we'll do our very best to get the answers. I'm gonna, we will be dealing ourselves as committee of the whole for this meeting tonight, I will be chairing it. And right now, with all due respect for the people who are here, we're asking people to limit their comments, whatever they might have, to about a three-minute period, et cetera. But we'll see if more people come in. And the way we'll handle that also, everyone who is here and wishes to have something that you say or ask us, you will get your opportunity. But the way we'll be operating it is, once one person has had their chance, then we'll go through everybody else before you get another chance for a second time around. And that's how we'll run this. As I said, what we are here to do is to talk about pretty much concentrating what we call Phase One, but that is not leaving out anything else in terms of the project that we are looking at. The one thing we are not here to do tonight, from the public point of view, is to debate whether or not we should be doing this. Because the point being, we've already done it. In terms of the select board and powers that we have in the town, we've already entered into and signed a excuse me, a purchase and sales agreement. So the main thrust of this is to, what we call Phase One, acquire the building. So this is where we're at at this particular point in time. So again, if everybody will be respectful with everybody else, and try not to be talking on top of someone else, and I'll try to keep it in control as best I can. With that in mind, is there anyone here for open session? Okay, then we'll need to stay as updated, if you will.
So just for the good of the order, open session is the time in which we anticipated the members of the public to ask their questions, express concerns, or generally speak. During the other portions of the meeting, if the chair were to call on a member of the public, it would be up to their discretion. This open session is the one part of the meeting where you can speak on, ask questions about what you see fit for your three minutes as we go around. There's only four of you, so we could probably make it around that a bunch of times if we really did that. But so I guess, Jeff, if you could give one more shot, if anyone wanted to take advantage of the open session this evening.
For open session, sure. And when I identify, would you please state your name and your address, please, for the purpose of the record? All right. So once again, anyone here for open session? Okay, Jazzy?
Yeah, I have two questions. I don't know if you-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. Jazzy Bracco, High Street.
Thank you.
I have two questions. I don't know if I can ask them both now, or if you want me to wait until I've been all set.
See what you have for some-
Okay. So my first question is, could you explain to me the process by which you came up with the budget figures and what consultants or experts you may have just talked with about the project before you came up with the budget figure?
Do you like the end?
That's question number one.
Yeah, so I, from the time we started talking about this, began looking at different things. I used the Massachusetts prevailing wage law, some data on different different average prices, which will all be placed on the internet after this evening. Like there, this question will be more than answered as to where I got my data. A lot of the beginning data was pulled straight from the 2019 prices, and then I went from there versus what we had, versus what changed moving forward. I do not think it's far off, but I also am not an engineer or a consultant, which we would be able to hire after Phase One. As noted previously, that what we're talking about for the most part is the Phase One, the purchase, the fixing of the roof, siding, potentially windows, code compliance, and the ability to enter into an agreement to get plans drawn up by a professional. We are certain on the cost of Phase One because of the fact that I negotiated the purchase and sale, and we now have procurement documents out for the three largest projects that we're looking at doing, should Phase One pass. And with that, we will be in a position to move forward. Tomorrow, when this document comes out, you will see that some of the sources of this information are, the data and cost estimates provided in this proposal are based on the prevailing wage rates and industry standards for public construction projects. These figures have been sourced from recent bids and market analysis specific to our region. I looked at about twenty to thirty different small community, rural community projects, threw a couple larger communities in there, not big, not Fitchburg, like others a little bit bigger than us to put some differential in there. The Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards issues a prevailing wage schedule that must be adhered to for all public construction projects. Compliance with these rates ensures fair compensation for all workers involved. So we know right around where the numbers are gonna be. So by pairing that with being able to move forward, the proposed cost for a new roofing and siding windows ranging from ten to seventeen per square foot are consistent with industry standards typically spanning from ten to twenty per square foot, roofing at ten to thirty per square foot for siding and siding that window. For construction of new public safety facilities and town hall buildings, the proposed range of three hundred to four hundred per square feet falls within the industry standard of two hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty per square feet, contingent on special requirements, finishes, and regional variations. Furthermore, the cost rate of a hundred and sixty-five to two hundred and forty per square feet for a prefabricated storage facility is in alignment with the standard range of one hundred to two hundred and fifty per square feet for comparable structures. So we worked, I worked through this, I did a boatload of research. We did work with an engineer, even though he did completely miss the scope of what our garage would be, and threw the pricing in his engineering report off. So between all of those options and making some calls to some different professionals that I know in the field, we, I was able to come up with the numbers that we are presenting.
If you want to have a follow-up, go ahead.
My second- It's not a follow-up question, it's a contingency, but-
Okay, well, it's all right. It's all right.
Okay, my second question is, could you tell me why you chose to have the Rec Field gazebo for your question and answer sessions when there's no protection from the weather, there's no seating, there's no audiovisual capability? And we've never done town business there except, I believe, one or two town meetings during COVID. Why aren't we having a question and answer session here?
We are, every Wednesday until the meeting.
Right, but why are you having them at the Rec Field as well?
Because a few people in the past have went public saying that, I didn't even know this was an option, like, they don't let us talk, so I wanted to meet people where they are. Thanks to firefighter Wilkinson, we're actually having a question and answer session at Stars and Stripes down there next Wednesday as well. I'll go, do you wanna have a question and answer session at your kitchen table? I'll go, I'll go down there, too. Like, we'll go anywhere. The gazebo is brand new, and it does have seating. We were there for an event for Claudia, who got a nice award a few weeks ago, so again, congratulations to Claudia. And it was sprinkling, and it was beautiful. We all sat at the picnic tables, and it was actually a great experience. I would be bringing printed out paperwork. If I'm being honest, Jazzy, I just picked it 'cause it was a nice spot, and I wanted to have more more options for people to come and talk to. So I picked an evening and a Saturday morning at a spot I thought was nice.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
But we are having it every Wednesday night also here.
Every Wednesday night, every Wednesday.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay. All right. Anyone else like to, yes, would you identify yourself, please?
Yep, Deborah Riley, thirty-eight Williamsville Road. One thing I haven't heard is taxes. When are they gonna be going up? Are they gonna go up?
So the current plan would have Phase One with no immediate tax impact, and then down the road, the tax impact of Phase One would be determined by what was chosen to do. Tomorrow, there will be, once approved by this body, there will be information about the tax options, too. We did, we were completely honest on the website that it was a living website, and it was going to update as things-
As we gathered more info.
As we gathered more info and heard what the questions were, and that first update is going to come tomorrow if I can, and if not, the next day the latest. But long and short, there'll be documentation coming out tomorrow, but the current proposed debt schedule would have us taking out the one point three to one point five in a band, a bond anticipation notice, which the interest on would be covered by the savings at the fire department and by the lease rent taken in as revenue by the different businesses. As I've stated on the website, as I've stated to many people, we have zero intention of surprise kicking these businesses out. We want to work with the businesses. The businesses are an integral part of this option.
It's good to hear.
So after that, we would go over two years. During that two years, we would make, we would have public hearings and test the water and see what the sentiment of the public would be moving forward. After many, many public hearings and professionals are brought in and an engineer to draw plans, and we do the Phase One, then we will begin to propose what Phase Two would look like. Should we approve Phase Two, then Phase One would be rolled into that, and then it would have an impact of who was gonna tell me I was gonna get there, and it's gonna be great.
I just haven't heard that question asked yet.
Well, Phase Two, keep in mind, has to go to a vote. It's not like we can just spring anything on anyone. This all, there'll be multiple votes. So if Phase One's a vote, Phase Two has to go.
Right, so-
You know, so this is all gonna be a very slow-moving process going forward for the next
Number of years.
Three, five years easily.
So the number I used in my guestimates, estimates that will be put out tomorrow or the next day, as long as they are approved by the select board and the Public Safety Committee was, let's say you have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it would be forty-four dollars per quarter, or a hundred and seventy-eight fifty-five annually for Phase Two of this project. So that's not Phase One. Phase One-
It's an estimate.
It is an estimate.
Make sure you say, yeah, make sure you just put it out there. We're estimating.
But-
Say it loud.
Yes, say estimate loud.
I had a tough time hearing, and when I listened to the meeting from last night, I had a tough time hearing people, so estimate.
Yes. Because things aren't set in stone, and five years from now, you know, it's-
Prices go up.
Exactly. So the longer, just like we are now, every time we kick this stuff down the can, down the road, it all just keeps piling up and make us in a worse spot than we were. So that's why I wanna make sure that everyone's aware, this is a phased, voted-on approach with estimates.
We can't supply every single answer at this stage.
Single, yeah. And that's the unfortunate part. I wish we could. I really wish we could. I would love to have all the answers.
This, this project has moved very fast, and I'm sure you're going to explain that whole process.
Did that answer your, okay.
And you're gonna have raw data in the next day or two.
And again, the reason that we have the system and the phases spread out is so that we have the least amount of impact on the community.
Right, yes.
Which is allowing us to do, or try to do, what we're trying to do.
And as an example, just so you understand the kind of numbers we're talking about, Phase One, if we went at the full one point five million dollars, and then all of the businesses decided that they had found greener pastures, or found a different place to go and left, and we had no more revenue, the tax impact to someone with a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be ten fifty a quarter, or forty-two dollars annually, estimated.
Estimated.
For discussion purposes only.
But that's if we're just paying no renovations, just we're stuck paying for the upkeep of the building, and we haven't gotten to the fact of renovating or moving forward with Phase Two. So that's if everything, everybody bailed, and we're just stuck holding it for now till we figure out Phase Two.
We'll have a building with a roof and siding and windows and nothing else.
Be watertight.
And, and safety for our fire department.
Right.
Safety for our public safety professionals. In addition, there is a contingency plan to, as a backup, that I worked up with our financial advisor. Say Phase Two doesn't pass. We tried, failed. We tried, failed. We can't come to an agreement with town meeting, we can't come to an agreement with voters, then we would enter into a ten-year permanent loan at the, I believe we would be able to get four percent interest, and we would pay off the one point five in ten years. And if the businesses, as we stand today, were still there, that would fully fund this loan. If they left, we would have to take on. I am by no means pretending that any of this is going to be free. There are going to be operational costs, there is going to be an increase in just our general management of facilities costs. We are trying to, we're proposing a project that will increase public safety in this community and thus start a domino effect that will impact the senior center, the library, economic development, recreation. This is the first domino in a long span of projects that could potentially last the next twenty years. This isn't something we just wanna do overnight, and this isn't something we're taking lightly. No one at this table wants to be a slumlord. That's why, and the town wasn't looking to be a landlord, but the opportunity arose. This opportunity, as many at home were saying, it didn't smack past the smell test, and this was brought to us, I can get to an exact date, and I'm gonna be writing up a calendar, I just did not have the time today, came to us maybe six weeks ago. So Chief Hayes got an email noting that the building was going to be going for an auction at an unspecified date. He came and told me, and at that point, my hamster started running.
I believe that was Wednesday afternoon on June twelfth.
Wednesday afternoon.
And I saw you on the thirteenth, 'cause it was right before I went on vacation.
So after that, two hours later, I was talking to the building owner and the realtor. After that, it took off. We had Mr. Varney come to an executive session. All of that will be put out on a calendar. Everything is above bar, and everything was clean, everything makes sense. I've already gone. Member Monroe and I have already gone and met with all of the businesses that are there in open, actually, like, business hours. We did not meet with the electrician, we did not meet with Mastot, so, but we, the whole plan is to work together for a project that builds the community, not something that divides it.
Okay. Someone else?
Phil May Rose, in Ragged Hill Road. Two quick questions. Something you said earlier about it's a done deal, that you've entered into a purchase and sales agreement.
Yes.
Isn't it correct that the people are gonna have to vote for that to happen?
Yeah, well, on our part, it's a done deal, which is what we are allowed to do for the town, entering contracts and purchasing of land. The money is your deal, so, yeah, and that's what I meant, in that sense.
So per the town charter, the select board has the right to enter into agreements for real estate and other such agreements. The thing that they don't have is the purse string. So that is what would be determined at town meeting. And should the money not be there, the contract's about as good as the paper it's written on.
Okay, and then a follow-up to something you said, is it possible that any of the tenants may stay on permanently there?
We'd have to work with them. Sir Mayrose, like, we, I'm not kidding when I say this will be a community conversation. This, we'll, we'll talk about it. Once, I'm not an engineer. Once we have an engineer come in, if they say, oh, we can house everything we have, and there's still five thousand square feet left, maybe?
Okay, just from last night's meeting, it sounded like you had already looked at where the police department would go, the fire department would go, and town offices.
And to a mathematical and math-only standpoint, and to a back-of-the-notebook drawing standpoint, sure. But I'm not an engineer, and I do not pretend to be one. So maybe, like, it's not out, but we'd have to be ready to work with them that, to find additional places to go. Like, it's, and it's something, we want to use this as a catalyst to build business in, in spaces that make sense. Not in the rural, next-of-the-woods, in spaces that make sense.
And we're honoring their lease for five years.
And who knows, maybe even longer, say the two-year lease, 'cause there's, one of them has a two-year lease, a three-year lease, and a five-year lease. I will have all of the leases tomorrow, and information that is sent to my email tomorrow or the next day is public record. So everybody will have that data, and after that, we'll know a little more about who has what, what the rental income would be, and if two years down the road, the lease is going, or one year down the road, if we don't know anything about Phase Two, one year, and we're barely just finishing up the roof, and things are going good, but we're not moving as quickly, there would be no harm in allowing someone to stay in a, in a facility that they're occupying. Like, we really want to be an open and transparent partner to these people. We just owe it to our public safety professionals to give a better place to work, and place to serve than they currently have. And there will be a video coming out next week at some point, giving a tour of the current facilities of the police and the fire department.
It does us no good to have empty space if we aren't moving forward, you know, so-
Especially when it's paying bills.
Exactly. So if someone wanted to stay on, I don't see why, unless there's some mass law that I'm unaware of.
There's not enough to do with-
Then we could, I don't see why we couldn't renew, you know, while we're still trying to figure out the whole process.
I'm sure there's some sort of deal, like, I haven't looked at the contracts. Our contract auto-renews if no one says anything about it for a certain amount of time. I believe it's one year.
Uh, yeah, there was a provision in, if you gave notice at the end, you could renew for another year, and then you could do it one more time.
Yeah.
So up to two years.
So that could be a four-year option, just without doing any more paperwork.
Okay. Claudia, do you have anything?
No.
Sir, you just came in, would you, do you have any question? Could you identify it?
No.
Tony Stokes, five Lowell Street.
You have any questions?
Not at this point.
All right.
Tony and Bill were here last night, too. They were here last night, too.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
To a follow-up. All right, is anybody on Google that has questions?
Uh, someone wants to join this call. It's Jazzy's husband.
Hang on.
Hi, Mr. Bracco, do you have any questions? Or Ms. Eastbrook, who's actually my pastor-wake grandfather's wife?
Okay, yeah, I was-
Hi, Liz.
Too much pressure.
I feel like she's hearing us.
It's okay.
Who is it?
That's Heather.
Oh, here she goes, she could-
She's got that, yeah. Hi, Heather, what's up? She's got the headphones on.
Heather, can you speak, just to make sure that the owl's working?
Speaking.
Thank you.
All right. Nobody?
Anyone got any more questions? We're here for you.
I know, we're the Facebook people, for the love of God.
And please, we're gonna be putting out more info to push people towards the website. I'm gonna try to put out digestible bites that can be shared on Facebook to dispel some of the rumors and blatant untruths that are, are being spread. I, it's just tough. It's the world we live in today.
Sir? Yes, here we go.
Just a quick question. So we enter Phase One. Fire, fire moves in there, everything's going good, and we don't wanna go any farther. How, can we go indefinitely like that?
Yeah. Oh, fire's already there. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no contingency that says for this all to work, we have to go in.
As long as the businesses wanted to be there, we would work with them if that were the case. This is, you're looking at this group, it is the intention to build a public safety building.
Sure.
Like, but if it really didn't work out, then sure, we could indefinitely work with people and piecemeal it.
So if the only thing that happens is fire goes there and it becomes a singular unit, and that's it?
Done, Phase One.
Yeah, no, and-
Not in Phase One. We would still be the way we are in Phase One.
Yes.
Offices and ambulance at Forty-Eighth Garden Road, but the station down in the center of town would still be necessary.
Yeah.
Phase Two has the bays coming up to be, yeah.
The construction.
And building up the additional bays for trucks and whatnot.
And Phase Two, yeah. Yeah.
So Phase Two brings us to a full station.
Phase Two is the lion's share of the project.
Yeah, Phase Two is, we take, we move into the building, police, fire, and town offices. So that's-
And one more time?
It would be police, fire, and town offices. That would be Phase Two. It'd have to be voted on by the town.
And what is the estimated cost, one more time, just for-
Right now, estimated, say, estimated.
Estimated seven to nine million dollars.
For Phase Two?
Yeah.
No, for-
No, the whole project.
The whole project, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for the, yeah, the Phase Two.
Let me open it.
Phase Two, what?
That includes Phase One.
Yeah, if Phase One rolls into-
Phase One rolls into two. Total cost would be, what did he say, seven to ten, or seven to nine?
So Phase Two- Seven, nine, yeah.
Seven, nine million. Total cost.
Phase One and Two.
Phase One and Two.
And then Three is how much more?
Three was the extra, it was like, what, five thousand, six hundred?
Five hundred thousand.
Phase One, after doing all this math, which will be released, and it's all equations, it's not guesswork, and I cite my references, I have receipts.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Is Phase One, one point two million dollars to one point five million dollars. This is a low total cost and a high total cost.
Yeah.
Phase Two, five point six million dollars to seven point five million dollars, low total, high total.
Inclusive of Phase One?
Inclusive of Phase One would roll into that after.
Roll into Phase Two.
At that time.
All right.
And Phase Three, half a million dollars to three-quarters of a million dollars. Bring us to a estimated, and for discussion purposes only, grand total of seven point four to nine point eight, nine point nine million dollars, high and low.
Over many years.
Over, over years.
And any one of those phases can be stalled out for indefinitely.
Yep.
And it still works.
Every, every one of those phases needs to be voted on.
Yes. At the will of the people-
Right, so the will of the people says, ah, no, not this year, then Phase Three doesn't happen that year.
But the-
But if, but if Phase Two doesn't happen, we can sit right-
Phase, he missed the Phase One, what happened when Phase One, he wasn't in the room.
So the town is in a better spot even if only Phase One passes, 'cause then we have a safe and secure home for our fire department to have their offices and their ambulances. We have now taken on a source of income that's going to pay for that loan. We save, let's call it twenty thousand dollars, 'cause there's going to be some money coming off of the tax rolls, and after the wash, let's call it twenty thousand dollars. Then there is additional space that can be utilized quite easily by, say, the town, parts of town hall that are in the library. Boom, that opens up the library for millions of dollars in grants that they're currently not eligible to get. It opens up the library to expand into different reading rooms in the, the grand old strategic plans that the library has. Even just Phase One is an improvement. And also, we're taking an incredibly distressed property that is, has been kind of rocked up.
Watch your words. Be nice.
I know, I said distressed.
Okay.
It is distressed.
I know.
Taking a distressed property and giving it the TLC it, it needs. Like, we are not-
Bringing it up to code.
Bringing it up to code. We are not seeking the seven hundred thousand dollars, and only the seven hundred thousand dollars to buy this building. It would be the money to buy it and fix it or nothing.
And not to belabor it, but at Phase One, it, it could go that way, kinda indefinitely?
I hope it doesn't.
Well, of course, but-
The, eventually, Phase One would roll into a more permanent loan, is the part that he's asking, that he missed.
Yeah.
The permanent loan would be how much per, for a taxpayer?
So, so, the contingency plan for Phase One and Phase One only, after a couple of years of paying the band, which the band is bond anticipation note of only the interest, which is covered completely by rental income and savings that we're already saving. Let it be known, asterix, there will be operating costs to this. This is by no means a free ride. We're not looking to flip properties, we're a municipality. But after a couple of years, if Phase- But after a couple of years, if phase one did not fly, if phase two did not fly, we would enter into a ten-year permanent borrow on the, on that one point five, one point three million dollars. The current finances of the operation would pay for that completely. But if every business in there decided, hey, we wanna get out of here, the average tax bill would increase for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home by ten dollars and fifty cents a quarter or forty-two dollars a year.
Estimate.
Estimated for discussion purposes only.
Good, good job.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'm listening.
I'm sorry, are there three hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses in Houston?
Uh, yes, there are, there are still a few, yes.
Not many.
Not many, but there's still a few.
That's why you don't listen to the average.
Yeah.
Uh, you add four hundred thousand to the average and now you're talking.
Yeah. But even still, so, you know, even if you have a six hundred thousand dollar house, double that price, you know, you're still, you're, how much?
Six hundred thousand, seventy-two dollars a year or eighteen dollars a quarter.
So.
That's phase one.
Phase one and only phase one. And phase one would roll into phase two.
Yeah.
And after phase two, now you're talking four to five hundred dollars a year.
No, a- after phase two.
There you went. For a four or five hundred thousand dollar home?
At five hundred thousand dollars with the mathematics, we have currently the estimates for a five hundred thousand dollar home, it would be sixty-four dollars a quarter or two hundred and fifty-six dollars a year.
For phase two?
For the entirety of the phase, phase two project rolling in phase one.
What do you read?
I don't know, maybe my eyes are playing with me. So, phase, phase one would be eighty dollars.
That's the.
Sixty.
For a six hundred thousand, is he looking at six hundred thousand?
No, I'm looking at five hundred.
Five hundred, okay.
Sixty bucks.
Sixty bucks total.
No, quarter.
For the whole year.
Oh.
Sixty bucks.
For the whole year?
Yeah. And then phase two.
Phase one, what's phase two, that's what I was asking, sorry.
For a five hundred thousand dollar home?
Two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Two fifty-six, those three on points.
Not four or five.
That's for five hundred thousand dollar home.
Yes.
Taxable, five hundred thousand dollar home. And add that to your interest and everything else, I mean, your insurance.
I'm sorry, yes?
So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not a finance guy, but, so just, just to keep it plain. If we entered to phase one and then phase two doesn't come along, we can stay in phase one, house the fire department, and not default, I guess my question is not default into some sort of financial program that ultimately ends up costing us a lot of money just to sit there in phase one.
No, as long as the businesses were to stay or new businesses were to come, we would be able to pay the loan without a debt exclusion and for some time. Should the people decide to leave, we would likely have to propose a debt exclusion to even get there, but.
But it's not gonna be, it's not a huge money sink, basically, is what, what you're asking, this isn't.
Yeah, it doesn't turn into something.
No, because, and without doing any kind of construction, no.
And this is not, is not, and this is not discussion, this is not a referendum vote on the whole project.
Right.
The twenty-second is about phase one. This is not the town committing to signing up and handcuffing themselves to an entire project. This is the town agreeing to have a conversation about a project that could look a variety of different ways. And that's why we're saying there's so many variables.
Yeah, this opens the door for possibilities, but it also secures a spot for our fire department because if this building sells to somebody else, there's no guarantees that person, whoever it sells to, wants to have the same idea of what that building will house, including the businesses or the town. We may all be looking for new places. And I'm not saying it will, it might be status quo, it might be somebody that's already there that buys it. It could be an investor that swoops in and picks it up and wants to turn it into housing. We don't, the, if it goes to auction, it goes to auction. We have zero control over any of it. Therefore, we can't guarantee where we will go if we are asked to leave for station number two. And I don't know where to put station number two. I am out of ideas!
That would probably have to mean us finding land.
Well, we have land.
Right, but building something and we already know that's an expensive proposition.
How that goes, it's more expensive than what we are doing.
And we should know the building just for police and fire would be approximately fifteen to twenty million dollars estimated and not set off that domino effect that helps the other areas. I was talking with Claudia today, saying, oh, if we built for police and fire, the town offices would not get out of here. We would likely rehab the front to get them out of the library, but that would lock the senior center in there. The seniors are very excited to potentially have a whole building that could, we could then work out of as a senior center. That would be awesome, that's the kind of things that these renovation projects are going to unlock, that would not be unlocked by a standalone new facility, which would be great, but has been turned down.
Additionally, if I could just add to everything that's, that's being mentioned, how this, the, the thinking released from my partner as well as for the boards, when this came up and it came up quickly, that there was gonna be an auction. Um, and then we were kicking it around, one of the reasons that I jumped for it and pushed for it, I felt that, uh, based on the eleven years I've been on the board, we've tried twice in this town to get a building. And, and specifically, uh, public safety sec- uh, was the second time, senior center was the first time, and so forth. And each time they were voted down. So, so the town basically sending a message, you're not getting a new building. Meantime, all of this, these years, our buildings are not getting better, they're deteriorating. It's a problem that we would have ongoing. And every year that goes on that we can't do anything about it, it gets more expensive to even think about trying to do something about it. So when this opportunity came, my feeling was this is an opportunity we can't afford to ignore, at least to make a try, because it would, in comparison to a nineteen to, to twenty-one million dollar building, which would only give you police and fire, it's, it's, it solves the problems for all of our abilities, not in the sense of the conditions they're in, but by ma- moving us, the three, you know, the two safety people and us out of here, it allows the seniors to move into here, which is a benefit to them. It clears up the Clark building, because I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, it's a historical building. But that is only supposed to be used as a library. And so long as anything else is in there, you cannot get historical grants. And number one, that particular lot right now has a foundation problem that we have to look at, that is going to be very expensive. Well, if we get this and we all move out, it now becomes available for many historical grants that might be able to take care of all of these things. So that's a savings right there. So it just seemed to be the chance, a chance that we just couldn't afford to ignore, uh, to solve some of our problems and get us moving, because we just didn't see, uh, our new building going anyplace. And our problems aren't gonna go away, so that's the, the quick history that's behind this.
We've been working really hard trying to keep these buildings up to snuff. And this town works really hard trying to, you know, Claudia's been working, she's been adding deck to try to make the senior center better. The police and fire try to keep their buildings up to par, the same with the library and all the town offices. But we need to start working smarter rather than harder. If we can move, things can get renovated, we can't renovate or fix or alter while we're sitting in these offices. You just can't do that, you can't like shift, oh, well, we're just gonna do this side, where do we go? While we're doing that, it doesn't work. So by moving, like he said, the library out, they can work on that, cause it's empty. If we get out of here, the, the senior center can, before they just come and inhabit it, they can like figure out if they can go somewhere with, set, you know, changing the layout or any of that stuff. Grant money opens up, this is all, like Nate said, a domino effect. Working smarter rather than harder, just trying to grind these nickels together to make quarters that we don't have. We can go after the state money, they're handing it out hand over fist for ADA grants and green communities are all over it. They're just like printing the money.
And we can't touch it right now.
Yeah, we can't take advantage of it, so we need to start doing that. And this is the way we can move forward doing it. Am I thrilled that it's this building? I wish the building was a little bit better to start, but we're going to at least make it watertight and make it so it's not gonna get any worse. Then we can start working on the interior to make that what we actually need. And again, it all has to go through vote and it has to be architectural plans and be all up to par and all that stuff. So it will be a phased approach, but we can work smarter doing this rather than harder.
I would like to back up though on that because we, we do appreciate and utilize green communities' grants.
Yes, we do.
What we would be able to do is utilize them more. We're running out of green communities' projects in the current iteration of buildings we have. Like the hundred and eighty thousand dollar heat pump project in the library is towards the tail end of what we can do. There's some weatherization efforts remaining and there's a few things at the school, but this would open us up to a, a large amount of funding. What it also opens us up to is the ability to say, the municipality took a shot. They are working towards their own goals. Like everybody, every municipality in the state, all three fifty-one, would love to be sitting there with their hand out going, please give me money to design a police department, please give me money to buy a police department. But no, they don't start talking to you about grants until you have a building that you're renovating into a proper facility or have these shovel-ready plans, which right now are running about a million dollars.
Nate?
Wait a second, I'll, hold it, I've been waiting for twenty minutes to ask a question.
Well, just let me know, okay, cause she, she's had her hand up, but go ahead.
No, she, go first.
Okay.
Ladies first, well, not gentlemen, but me.
Great.
Um, okay, why, why is it that you think that renovating this, the, the Breezy Hill building, which presumably will have to be renovated up to code for the fire and the police and the town? Why do you think that that would be half the price of building a brand-new building? What, what, what is the reasoning for that?
The structure's already there.
Structure's already there.
The septic's already there.
The site ratings are already there.
Everybody's already there, we, yeah.
The community well, all of that's already there.
You know, you have a well, a, a new.
You, we have no septic.
No, you have a septic.
And we have no building.
Site grading is a million dollars in its own right.
Would that septic be adequate for?
Yes.
One, one of the things that we have discovered is that to build brand-new, the town would have to commit to the ten to fifteen to twenty million dollars and say to the state and federal, hey, we c- we will spend this money. And then maybe you might be able to get a grant to offset some of that. But those grants are few and far between. If you have an existing structure that you say, we would like to improve this structure to meet code, to put panel, solar panels or whatever, now you are opening up a whole bunch of other grant opportunities to offset those costs. The reason we're going for this is because ultimately it will cost us less than building new. And the opportunity to offset those costs is much higher.
And it spreads out the tax impact, like if we were to go to, say, a nineteen million dollar bill, building, that's gonna be a six hundred dollar per year annual tax impact immediately, like boom, the, the clock strikes midnight, now your tax bill's six hundred dollars higher. This way, we can't.
And maybe in three years, we'll get a grant of a couple of million dollars, but it's not gonna really help yet.
So basically, that was my statement. As these estimates on the tax burden on the homeowners, um, by these numbers, that does not include, um, grants. So, that five to seven million, say you get one point five to two million in grants, now this tax burden lessens, decreases on the homeowner by the total amount that, you know, the est- our estimate. So this is just pure financing by the resident, that's what this is by the way. It does not include grants.
We would, we would work really hard, we have several employees that would be on that task. I would look into hiring a grant writer, they're few and far between and a lot of the grant writers don't like kind of the rural communities because it's a lot more attractive in a bigger community cause there's easier, easier money due to the fact that there's more money and more projects. But we would definitely look into your relationship with a grant writer. I would be writing grants, the chief would, chief would be writing grants, we would be looking, we would be on the hunt for, for funding.
Do you have a list, I'm sorry. Do you have a list of these grants, I mean, do you know what these grants are or, I mean, can you put a list of those grants?
Yep.
A potential grant?
Not a, oh no.
What, what'd you do?
TV shut off.
You lost Heather.
You broke it.
No, they're still here.
Oh, okay.
They're just not showing to us.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm here.
Okay, as long as you people can see how subtle that matters. We don't need that.
It won't be an exhaustive list, like I, I don't know every possible, we're gonna have to move rocks and look for, for things and there.
Part of the job of a grant writer is to find grants that are not maybe publicly known.
And those well advertised.
Well advertised.
They hide, it's almost like they hide them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so you gotta go search.
Oh, Heather, you got something?
I was just saying, I was just gonna say that I think we still can put together at least a preliminary list of various ones that, you know, we've already discussed in our meetings and we're thinking that would be very valuable for us to consider, um, even though it's not an exhaustive list, but that way it would give the residents an idea of, you know, which, which things we're looking at. You know, we talked already about, you know, the ADA grants as well as the, uh, what was the other one? The green communities grant, but we can talk about, you know, what type of funding we're looking at for those pieces and, you know, um, what types of projects they generally cover. But I think Nate's right, like there's no way to cover every single possible grant, it's too cumbersome and I think we're gonna have to look at unique ways to put various pieces together to be competitive.
And I have a list in my, on my computer that I put together earlier, earlier this year or late last year, of about six hundred annual grants. So we know where to look, it's how do you become competitive? Are there parts of each grant that we would be disqualified for? What couldn't we really go and utilize to our advantage? Something we would be able to utilize to our advantages, Anne Goby's new role. She has a woman named Mallory on staff who is a rural grant writer. She works with rural communities to apply for grants. You have to do the, have to do the lifting, but Mallory will work with you. In a proposal to the select board on Monday night, I'm gonna be proposing a part-time planner. That part-time planner, should the proposal move forward, will be able to talk to the planning board, the select board, and myself about potential grants to go that way, that's not necessarily a public safety building, but it's another means of grants that we're looking for. We're already looking, like we're, yeah, I will make a list.
We, we know they're out there, but we really need a dedicated individual to chase them down.
I understand that.
And that's part of several of our job descriptions at this moment, like, almost everybody is grants.
And the other thing too is, yeah. Yeah, and the other thing too is we don't wanna put too much into it right now without passing step one. You know, if we can't get phase one through the door, then all of that time would be wasteful. So we gotta be careful about how much time we do spend, we do wanna make sure people are aware, these are, you know, some of the types of grants we can go after, but we're not gonna pull up every single thing just to try to spend all this money digging, you know?
But, but you must know that there is some low-hanging fruit, otherwise you wouldn't be putting so much emphasis on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on grants, yeah, like that foundation over there, I'd love to get a grant for that, like for the library, let's fix our library.
There's some low-hanging fruit, there's some partnerships.
I'm sorry, okay, Claudia, go ahead.
I just have one question, um, if phase one passes, does that mean that passes and we bought the building?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so phase one, we bought the building, we can get all that other stuff done. Phase two, we don't know.
Exactly.
Could you repeat your question so I can type it?
I said, I just wanna make sure if phase one passes at the end of, at the meeting, does that mean that we own the building?
Yep.
Phase one is also windows, roof, siding.
Yeah, watertight.
Yeah.
By the building, windows, roof, siding, tighten it in, make sure there's no more intrusion.
Protect the investment.
I released procurement packets today and we've already had some vendors reach. I released procurement packets today and we've already had some vendors reach out interested for a quote on roofing, siding and windows. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that member Monroe kind of made me do it. But we will have stronger numbers by town meeting.
Need those numbers. Yep.
All right, Claudia?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, so kind of a different question, but maybe for the chief. Last night it was briefly discussed about response times and how it was a thirty to sixty second.
Which chief are you talking about?
Fire chief. Sorry, fire chief. Uh, there was a thirty to sixty second out-the-door time kinda thing mentioned last night. Uh, and then it was said, if you had to combine the stations, sometimes you add five minutes to that response because you have to go down to the other station and then launch the vehicles or whatever. And it turns into a five minutes plus thirty to sixty seconds, right? So is there any kind of data that says by combining the two stations, the response times become drastically lower and hence the survival rates of, I don't know, we call them respondees or, uh, like is there data that says by doing this, we're gonna increase the likelihood of a victim surviving by X amount?
Yeah, I don't have all those numbers off the top of my head, but NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, they have data on that. They set standards of the engine's supposed to be out the door in under sixty seconds. Because fire multiplies by, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but exponentially grows faster. So the faster you get out there, the faster on scene you suppress the fire. So if you're talking the difference between a delay of two people at Breezy Hill going down to the center of town, depending on traffic, not everybody, we still go down, they'll respond in a vehicle with lights and sirens, but not always. People move out of the way, big trucks. It can take anywhere from two and a half, four to five minutes before they get there, get in the station, get their gear on, get the apparatus out the door. So it delays it and that's a that could be a huge difference, a matter of minutes makes a difference.
So with that, kind of a non a non tangible like investment return kind of thing is the human factor.
Yeah. Yes.
The human factor is this might save lives, actually.
Yes.
Okay.
And property, preserve property.
Yeah, property, yeah, okay.
And our insurance could go down.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Anyone online have any questions? Mr. Bradco, Taylor? Those are the only people on the phone.
Okay. Again, we're all these Facebook people.
And two, that's and that's that two to four minute thing, that's on a good day.
Yeah.
You know, if we're always keeping the vehicles ready and everything, but if it's in the middle of a blizzard and we're there, um, I mean, sometimes we will bring an engine up depending on certain uh certain situations. But if the crew just gets into the the station, it's a snowstorm and now the apparatus, you know, truck five sits outside, they gotta clear that vehicle off to go to the other station to get the engine. So weather, rain, snow, that impacts it even more, so.
I mean, it was said like last night, uh, I don't wanna be house number two, I think it was.
Yeah.
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 So so the way, but the point is, so firefighters come back, they've been in a, uh, material laden atmosphere, they gotta go home and take a shower, whatever, or take a shower at the building. But go home and take a shower more likely, now you have showers on site and and it has the firefighters on site more rapidly responding to house number two.
Yeah, that's like a lot of places, that's the the new standard is the days of old where your turnout gear was dirty and it was a badge on or that doesn't fly anymore. Um, the gear's supposed to be washed after every fire. Um, we, most of the members only have one set of turnout. We don't have washer or dryer on seats. We have to ship that out to be washed commercially. Or if we're lucky, we can go to one of the surrounding towns, but that puts that person out of service. But yeah, you come back from a fire, you're supposed to have a clean set of gear and shower before you actually go back on duty. That's a that's a thing that a lot of new departments that have the capability to do that, that's where they're moving towards. They're actually getting to a point where after a fire, you don't even wear your turnout gear in the apparatus anymore. The gear needs to be ta take taken off, bagged and put in a compartment on the truck. Because that's the the increase in cancer and all that is just it's coming more to light, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We certainly don't wanna bring that home to you, yes.
So I I have a I have a friend, John McGrath, I wanna mention his name. John McGrath, Sergeant Marlborough, died from cancer, uh, in the fire department and the issues you're talking about. But it might understand that if you come back with turnout gear that has been soiled and you get a new call, you won't respond because your gear is dirty?
No, you still respond. But if you like, so we don't, if it's a small fire and somebody's gear is slightly soiled, it's probably not gonna go out to get cleaned, because we just can't do it.
Right.
If it's heavily soiled, it's going to get cleaned. It should be cleaned after every fire. We don't have that capability. We gotta send it out. So we either have two options, either goes to an area fire department or we send it out, we're gonna pay to have it cleaned. If it's sent out, it's gone for three or four days. A lot of the members only have one set of gear. So if there was a fire later on and the gear's sent out, they wouldn't be able to be acting in full capacity.
So if it wasn't there, not that they wouldn't put on dirty gear.
No, we would put on the dirtiest gear you've ever seen, go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they were still there readily available, yes.
And does the new facility include include the cleaning facility?
That would be part of the the plan.
And there are grants available for that, which and that's one of the low-hanging fruit grants.
But it's not included in phase one?
No.
No, no.
Initial expense.
Phase one is simply acquiring the building and taking care of the outside and the roof.
Making it watertight.
The only the only thing is, as far as, if I do misspeak, correct me, but my impression of phase one for the fire department is number one, the building itself is gonna be much improved because we had years where we had to deal with that roof over the station and they wouldn't repair it, all kinds of leaks. They finally did replace that, but there's still issues with the gutters, the rest of the roof next to our, you know, little jog out part of it. Um, so the building's, you know, the siding's falling off, so it's gonna become, you know, weather tight. That's gonna be a bonus for us and the number one bonus is we're not gonna be leasing anymore. And our lease was renewed, but only for three years. At least we know the town most likely won't affect us. You never know.
As long as you pay your rent, see.
There's day day one, if we purchase this, that'll be a huge relief because at least we have that space. Any of the other stuff, response times, uh, cleaning, none of that stuff's gonna change until we get to a phase two.
And then just kind of an odd question is, is there a benefit to having police and fire together in the same building in terms of response, same same idea?
Uh, I don't.
Is it beneficial?
I guess on some, well, they're out on patrol, so they could be coming around, you know, they could be on the other side of town with a call coming in. I guess if you're leaving at at the same time for certain calls, yeah, would be a benefit, but they're out on the street more often. Um, but there is benefits with phase two sharing of like training spaces and opportunities to train more together because we have, you know, adequate training area.
And besides just having them together, they, both of our departments, and I'm taking anything away from what they do because they do a hell of a job, are, uh, they're lacking a lot of things that this should be having now. Uh, we we don't really have, well, there's a whole list of things, but I mean, in terms of police and fire, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so we, when we initially started as a as a committee, we visited local fire stations that had either been remodeled, added on to, or were brand-new. We went and did really our due diligence on that. And Mike, um, came, um, in, uh, yeah. So, um, and Seth, who's not here, uh, the three of us went and did some of these and it was painful to see what they had and we didn't have because it is a it's a lot. And you should go visit an updated fire station and then go visit ours because it's it's
Sad.
It's sad, it's very sad. And I know the constraints of the town, I know the constraints of each individual person are 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 hard right now, but these people are the people that keep us safe. And for me, the biggest thing being on this committee and being part of this is that I would hope we would treat the people who keep us safe in the right way. And that's just from my heart because as we're talking about this, I just keep thinking of all those visits we had and the police station has a Sally Port where they can put somebody while they're transferring them over. We don't have that here. They get locked up to a bench. Um, it keeps our police officers safe from someone who is could harm them. Um, there are lockup units that they should have that they don't have. Um, so we aren't even, we aren't technically to code on so many things for the police and the fire. We're not even to code on a lot of stuff.
We don't have facilities to take care of women.
We don't have facilities to take care of men, right?
It, yeah, yeah.
There's no facility to put somebody in a lockup.
The point is, you can't have them both together in a police station. They have to have separate, and we've never had that.
They arrest somebody, I mean, we've got two main drat, we've got sixty-two and we have sixty-eight. And a lot of people travel these roads. They arrest somebody, they have nowhere to put them. Where do you put them? In a conference room?
We have to, so, yeah, when we have multiple prisoners, sometimes we're booking a prisoner in a patrol area and they're handcuffed to a chair. So that's not, that's not, not not as it only not ideal.
Not safe.
It's not safe. It's not safe for the officer, it's not safe for the prisoner. And what we have to do to bring them in the building from outside isn't safe for the prisoner either. You have somebody that's handcuffed behind their back and you're bringing them through two steps to get into a building and their arms are behind their back. Well, you can have a hold of somebody, but if you have a bigger person, even some smaller people, if they trip and fall, they're tripping and falling. You're not gonna really do much to stop that, you know?
And then they're suing us.
And then having a, you know, a new a newer place that we renovate to have a Sally Port, which is just a garage for anybody that doesn't really know. But you go into the garage, you shut the doors, it's a secure area. You take the prisoner out and they walk up a ramp instead of going up steps into a booking room that's also more secure than what we have now. Um, so and then with us being with the fire department, I mean, it does improve interdepartmental communication. I wouldn't say necessarily response time because it just depends on where our officer is in town. We have a more proactive job where we need to be out there patrolling, but, um, and we don't have the space to add on to what we have now. We've outgrown that space, so.
The fighter the fighter department also lacks, uh, facilities sep- separate for a woman. Okay, that's another thing, and I'm not if you're aware, but the the barn, and it was built as a barn downtown, every, uh, piece of equipment that's in there has had to have been custom-made so it can fit, excuse me, so it can fit, because the, uh, normal size would be oversized, right?
Yeah, the normal size fire trucks don't fit.
Can you can you speak about that?
And that's an expense, it's very expensive when you have to have the fire engines custom-made.
Can the chief speak about that, the struggles that we're having with purchasing new apparatus because of the?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, yeah, so it's a consideration when you go with this with the station that was built in nineteen sixty-one. Um, the trucks then were literally half the size. Um, and as the years have gone on, they've doubled sized with dairy, more water than those apparatus ever did. And they've grown to fit in that station, but due to the size of the doors, the ceiling height, the I-beam support, the height of the truck has to be, uh, taken into consider when it's designed. And then it's only forty feet deep, barely, um, so the length. And when you're carrying, you know, we don't have any hydrants in town and when you're carrying two thousand to twenty-five hundred gallons of water, you can either go up higher or you have to make the truck longer to get the water on there. And every time we build a truck, it has for the specific space, there's stairs going upstairs, it has to be accounted for. Um, and with that, there's extra costs. And it makes it difficult too because a lot of newer stations, they have bigger bay doors, trucks are over ten feet tall. And if we wanted to entertain used vehicles, that becomes an issue because you might have something that's used that we could purchase, which is coming more of a reality due to the expensive apparatus. Um, but it's gonna be designed for a station that's bigger, not like the one we have, so it does impact it.
Anything else? Does anyone else have any questions or anyone from the public safety that haven't spoken yet? Do you have anything? Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just for the benefit of the people, Mike Stahl and a member of the Public Safety Building Committee. Um, the way I look at it is there's two extremes, status quo and build all new. And that helps to bracket our approach. The status quo, I don't believe is sustainable and it is very high risk. Building all new is very high cost and hopefully lower risk. But what's being proposed here is in the middle. It's a mixed approach. It's failed, uh, phased approach that gives us a lot of opportunities at very low risk and at a balanced approach to cost and how to finance and fund these improvements. Um, this is an opportunity that is not gonna come up every day or every year. And if we don't act now quickly and decisively, we may lose this opportunity that is low cost, low risk and provides high advantages. I was talking to the grants, getting out of the library, uh, increasing, um, the safety of both our public and our public safety, um, responders. So to not take advantage of this seems like a missed opportunity that we may not get another chance at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Because there's no other building in town that meets the needs. So if we don't go with this one, there's not gonna be another building that we can say, okay, well, maybe we can, whatever we were thinking about forty-eight Gardner Road, we can do with that building. There isn't.
Right, if this opportunity's missed, now you're talking twenty million dollars to build a facility.
Yes.
Twenty million to build a facility.
Now, now.
And that means if somebody else buys that property, the ambulances could be kicked out, we don't know. I mean, even though they have a lease, somebody could come in and wanna put up an apartment building in there. You're all, everybody over there's out. Now where do they go? We gotta start searching around for another rental property. I mean, if, and if you all know, there aren't many around this town.
Anything else? And that's not meant to as a to be used as a scare tactic or by by any use at all.
No, no, no.
No, no.
It's just it's just the fact.
I'm talking about what people have brought up on Facebook.
Yeah.
It's it's the reality of where we're at this second.
It's reality. I didn't know if, you know, I want the residents to know that if we don't do this and somebody else, I mean, that building will go up for sale. We don't know who would buy it. Maybe the vet would buy it, maybe not, maybe somebody would outbid her. I mean, it's possible they could stay there, it's possible they could get kicked out. It's like playing the lottery, you don't know.
Yeah, honestly, as a landlord, if I owned a building, I'm gonna tell you straight up, I would not want the town in my building. I just wouldn't, I'm not even gonna pretend, like I'd be like, hmm, bye, you know?
Correct.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
And it's not because, like, I don't want them, I just, the town has a, and not this town in general, I just mean in general. Yeah, no, because I don't even own like rentals in this property, in this town, but I just wouldn't want it because it's just, like, there's eyes in there and there's things and I just, like, no, I don't want that. The assessor and, you know, everybody's scary, ooh, stuff, you know, you just, I just wouldn't want the town in my building. I don't want the town on my property. And I live in Hubbard City, I don't even want them on my property. And I am the town, well, part of the town. I'm just like, no, but that's a reality and I hate to say it and I don't know how else to say it. I'm, I say things that most people will not say.
We know, Kate.
I know, but as a landlord, I will tell you a hundred percent, I would not want the town in my property.
And there's a chance someone may consider an insurance risk.
No, I would agree if someone else buys it, they're, they're gone, yeah.
There's a chance that a potential landlord could consider the fire department being there at insurance risk that they don't wanna take. There's just, there are so many variables.
They could even tear the building down and put up whatever it is, because land is more important than the building.
Might, yeah, might buy it, you know, build condos or something. It's like, there's, you have no idea.
And they would have every right to do it.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else?
I, yeah, I just wanna say that, and I've probably already said this. I'm one of the more frugal people on the board that does, I do not like spending. I, yeah, I just wanna say that, and I've probably already said this, I'm one of the more frugal people on the board that does, I do not like spending money. And you can ask anybody, I get pretty irate about it when I hear about taxes increase and money going up. And even up to three weeks ago, when the first meeting up there, I was irate about the taxes going up.
Oh, yeah.
I was mad, but then I started to realize, I said, wait a minute, I'm getting older, I'm gonna be sixty-four. We need a place for our public safety to be if if I have a need to call them and, you know what I mean, it just, the population's getting older in town. Yeah, it's gonna get younger too, as younger people move in, uh which means your taxes are going up anyway because of COVID. So I came to the decision that I'm all for this. I wasn't all for this in the beginning, now I'm one hundred percent in just because of we're in dire need. It's been shot down twice before in the town. This is a great opportunity to uh get somewhere where we haven't been in twenty-five, thirty years in this town.
As as someone who will be retiring in a few years, who's right behind you, I would rather not see us pass this and then be forced into a situation where we have to build new at beyond twenty million dollars when I am on a fixed income at that point.
Yep.
Yeah, had we built a public safety building ten years ago or something like that, it would be halfway paid off at this point.
If you have. Correct. Correct.
So.
And nothing's getting cheaper.
And nothing is getting cheaper.
And.
And to those who think things will get cheaper after the election, uh no.
Not necessarily. You don't know, right? It's like playing the lottery. You don't know.
Right.
What you don't know, you don't know, so it is what it is.
And fun fact about the effectiveness of taxpayer dollars, I don't have an exact number, maybe I should, but we're about a half million dollars into lease payments in this building anyhow. I jokingly said the other night, last night, that, oh, I wish it was a rent to own, but that's not how how it goes, but.
Yeah.
That would have been nice.
Yeah, only two hundred and fifty thousand.
We're halfway there.
But we're we're into that for some some decent change already. Any further questions? If you've got anything, we're here. We're here every Wednesday.
Questions or comments?
Thank you for your time, but I've got to go.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Well, if there's nothing, nothing else from anyone, um.
Heather, the meeting's not over.
I know. Heather, you're not leaving?
She did leave already.
What?
Yeah, she bolted.
Then we'll uh.
It's feeding time.
It might be.
Pass on the uh question and answer part here and move to uh the setting up the hearings and the meetings video.
All right. I'll keep my status update very short. The building inspection is booked. I should know tomorrow or the next day when. The attorney for the seller tried to send our attorney all of the leases today, but they were Google blocked. So so we're we're working on that.
Why don't they just FedEx?
We can fax.
For nineteen dollars or whatever.
Twenty-one dollars.
Jeez.
My paper is still on the printer.
What do you mean, this?
No, that's a different paper.
Okay, this? Okay.
Personally.
Oh.
We're, I'm gonna be working on some shorter, more digestible pieces to send out for your review over the next few days. Some of those ideas are a schedule, way of what went what went on, a tax impact document, a sheet on how you can hear about this, talk about this, and the plan moving forward of having a community discussion. If anyone has any ideas, I'm very much open to help, so absolutely. Uh I email you guys quite a bit. Uh over the next few weeks, I'll try to rein it back and send collective emails, but when there are attachments, there are attachments, so.
Lots and lots of name moles.
I didn't see you here, you said infographic.
Yeah, it's trying to. It's trying to.
Oh, there's gonna be.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's all I have for now.
Okay. The next public hearing is next.
Uh.
Wednesday, I think.
You guys had said something about a schedule, so I was hoping to go through the public hearing list and talk about who does what.
Okay.
August seventh, Joint Life Board Meeting, Public Safety Building Committee Meeting here, six P M.
My birthday.
Happy birthday.
I won't be for that. No, you don't wanna come join us on your birthday?
You can zoom in, I mean, you can Google in with us.
Good stuff.
Seven to eight.
So that's next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I messed up.
Yeah, you went wrong, sorry.
August seventh.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, four.
Yeah.
This isn't, this is live.
I, yeah, that's fine.
I'm gonna go to all these other ones?
Right now, so it's it's Wednesday.
August eighth, there's a session at Stars and Stripes. I know Jeff had mentioned that he would likely go with me. I will go. Taylor, who is online, had actually set it up.
Is there anyone? So that's Thursday, right?
It's um.
Wednesday, the eighth.
No, it would be a Thursday.
That's the wrong day, it's the wrong.
Wednesday is August seventh. Taylor, are we Wednesday or Thursday?
If it's the eighth, it should say Thursday versus Wednesday.
Yeah.
So there's two Wednesdays here.
Yeah, they, it was. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to use this. Uh it's Wednesday, whatever the Wednesday is.
So it's August seventh.
Okay.
So the seventh and the Wednesday is August eighth.
If if I could suggest that you send out meeting invites to those folks so that they can just accept them and they show up in their calendars.
Okay.
So there'll actually be two meetings on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
So and so right now Jeff will, Ta- Jeff will be there, Taylor will be there. Are you going too, Nate?
Yep.
So so.
So is that's enough? That's enough? Okay.
Probably not.
The chiefs can come. I hope they do.
Yes, I'll be there.
So that's not required for meal jolly?
So it's all right.
Come on, Ben.
Cocoa.
I'd say I'll.
It's a good.
I'm on vacation.
Oh.
It's a separate time.
No, it's not required.
Cookies with coffee.
It's a it's a public meeting, so we don't.
Coffee with coffee.
We can have as many as you. Yep, no, the gazebo and the and the diner are not the public sessions. We still can't have quorum of any entity, which we wouldn't, but.
Is there any refreshments? Maybe I'll go.
There are refreshments for sale.
For sale?
Well, it starts in, it's a diner. You can buy yourself a cup of coffee.
I'm talking about the gazebo.
Oh. For Pete's sake, why do we need snacks?
So that should be.
B Y O B.
We're getting off track, yeah, where are we?
Sorry, August fourteenth is a public session, it's a public session.
Yes, that is very good.
Because they think.
For those watching at home.
If you want, I can do it unless somebody else wants to. I can do ten.
Chiefs, can you come to that as well?
That would be this, at the senior center.
Which one?
Public session one.
Unless somebody else wants to do it. I don't mind going to that.
Fourteen.
Um. Public session on the senior center, August fourteenth.
Yeah. It's a long walk.
You have a different one.
Yeah.
No, I can't. I have an appointment that day.
Grab that one.
These are moving to the best.
Yeah. Get the one that.
It cannot be the senior center one. You cannot, no.
You? I think so.
So we're right here. Uh August fourteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, this and this.
There's nothing on my calendar right now, so I.
Those two are both the September.
Yeah, I'm gonna fix the calendar.
I'm gonna fix the calendar.
We're going live.
Plus plus the September, that's.
The Stars and Stripes.
Oh.
That's the seventh.
Yeah. So and then they're saying, I s- I said I can go if no one else wants to do that one at the senior center. I'm scared.
We have the same date issue.
Oh.
It should say Wednesday.
We just don't wanna make a war, I'm not saying, and I don't have P or P O either.
Yeah, it's hard to.
It's a Wednesday.
It is Wednesday, yeah.
Uh but you're gonna be at the senior center, we'll be talking about that.
So Wednesday's fifteenth, really?
Yeah, I'll be at everything. I'm going to everything.
Wednesday.
So what's Tuesday, the thirteenth?
So you have Tuesday, August fourteenth, and Wednesday, August fourteenth.
Again, with the dates?
I'm gonna fix the date.
Okay.
So is it? This is not live. It's Wednesday, right? It's Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, so this is Wednesday.
So let me now.
Is this the most recent one that you sent out? Did I have it home?
No, this is an updated one even to that, and a thousand things were going on today, and I was trying to rush and I will send out a schedule live and.
At the one.
Don't, I'll just come in and get it. When's it gonna be ready?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Probably tonight.
So I'll go with that.
Yeah, no kidding, seriously.
So who do who do we have going to the senior center right now? Is that where we were?
I don't, yeah, I don't mind going and Nate doesn't mind going. I, and that's if you got, as long as we don't make a quorum.
Chief said probably.
Yeah, okay.
What is Wednesday's senior center? What day is it?
That's a.
Wednesday. Wednesday, August fourteenth.
Wednesday.
Ten A M. And then there's another meeting, but we won't schedule the meetings. Whoever, as long as there's a quorum at the meeting, that's fine.
So I could go to this one.
You'll then we make a quorum. I think you should be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would make three of us and then it comes in.
Yeah, a quorum.
I'm saying it.
Then one of them has to drop off because they have three select work.
Oh, right. And which you drop off.
So.
That's fine.
Okay.
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 All right.
Well, that's the whole thing. It's like, we don't wanna make quorms if without posting, so that's why.
Correct, correct.
It's only two of us can go, and I don't really.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to go. If you wanna go.
No, I. If you wanna go, go, travel to senior.
I'll go, maybe.
Make friends.
Need to speak to Sean Castle anyways. They might have cookies.
Yeah, they usually have cookies.
They definitely have cookies. There are certainly cookies.
See what they had over there today, I'll let you go on them.
Because I pop in over there all the time, so I was like, nothing new.
The gazebo, who wants to join me at the gazebo?
It's just like. Which day is that?
Wouldn't that actually be in the pavilion, technically?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why Jazzy said that. That's why she said why the gazebo, I think that's why she, yeah.
Pavilion. It's the new line's pavilion. I have not gotten this word correctly.
And it's banned. And and it's also, the other thing is called a ban stand, not a gazebo.
I'm gonna fix that word.
They're saying it's a ban stand and pavilion.
So Thursday, August fifteenth.
What's a gazebo?
A gazebo is a little thing on Clark's Corner.
Oh. Uh.
So I can do Thursday, August fifteenth. Let's get our terminology right.
Yeah, get your common hangout partner.
A whole. I can probably be there. Carrie said she could do.
I can do Thursday, August fifteenth.
All right.
What time is it? At six thirty?
Yeah.
I could do that as well.
Good.
I can't do the Saturday. That's just not happening. I got two farmers markets that day.
Are you going on the Thursday, Joe?
Thursday.
Or are you going Saturday?
Saturday, I can't.
Katie and Carrie are probably enough for the Thursday night coming with me because I don't anticipate that there's gonna be
A whole lot of.
Forty people there, so you never know.
So there is seating.
There's, are they doing soccer yet?
That would be a great way to get people in.
I know.
That seems to sales.
I'm just saying that's.
So, yeah, no, the seventeenth I couldn't, so.
Yeah, the seventeenth I cannot. I get two farmers markets that morning.
I can do the seventeen.
Okay.
I'm not doing it by myself.
I'll do it with you.
I'll be there.
Okay, and Peter and Nate, that'll work, yeah.
We're going to.
Yeah. And then after all this.
Don't wanna handle it yourself? Come on.
No, I need support people.
So knowing that. I'm taking a few days off after all this is done. Good.
I might be there.
Seventeen, maybe Mike.
I'm putting it in.
I know, I'll put it in the cards so I don't forget.
In the twenty-first is our final meeting here.
Yeah.
Before the uh.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. Okay.
Um Nate, are you drawing up the agendas for the meetings or are we gonna be talking about what do you, how do you want to be?
I guess it depends how things go.
Okay.
Because there, it'll mostly be talking about documentation, talking about how things are going, which did we skip?
Because aren't we at some point gonna wanna go over our presentation for town meeting and all that, so we should make sure.
We skipped everything.
Wow. Yeah. Yeah, and we can talk about that. So, yeah, I'll do the agendas. I'll talk to the two chairs and I'll do the agendas.
And it might not be a bad idea if we could push the uh presentation update, not to the night before,
I, yes, I agree, yes, at least.
the week before that, just so in case we have to make any changes, you know? Could we try to do that?